Good evening. Today is March 22, 2022. It's now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. We will ask Councilman Carolina to give us the implication and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we come together asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in the service of humanity in Georgetown and humanity worldwide. My prayer is for peace worldwide. We pray for peace for all, and we ask for all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. I want to just say thank you to the audience for attending our meeting this evening. Please note that we do have a quorum present for our meeting this evening also. We'll move on down to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move items 9B, 15A, and 15B forward on the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the noted changes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. With that being said, we'll begin with the proclamation honoring Melissa Jefferson. Mr. Carolina?
Yes, good afternoon. It's an honor and a pleasure today that county council recognizes one of Georgetown County's own for accomplishments and achievements at Coastal Carolina University as a student athlete, also an alumnus of Carvis Bay High School. Ms. Melissa Jefferson, please come forward along with your family, friends, and coaches as I read and present this proclamation to you.
Got a face.
Got a lot of support here, a lot of support, friends, family, and coaches. And I'm going to be reading the proclamation and hold on to all the whereas. Melissa Jefferson. Whereas Melissa Jefferson has been named a 2022 NCAA national champion upon winning the women's 60-meter dash with a record breaking time of 7.9 seconds at the NCAA Division One Indoor Track and Field Championship on March 12 in Birmingham, Alabama. And whereas the National Collegiate Athletic Association is a nonprofit organization that regulates student athletes and organizes the athletic programs of colleges and universities in the United States and Canada, assisting over 480,000 college student athletes who compete annually in college sports, the first NCAA national field and track championship being held in 1921. And whereas, as a native of Georgetown County, Melissa Jefferson's journey began many years ago when at a very young age she demonstrated amazing athletic abilities, determination, and dedication. In 2011, she became a finalist in the nine-to-10-year-old Hershey Track and Field District Competition. Melissa eventually placed first in the state Hershey Track and Field North American Finals. Melissa was one of only six qualifiers to represent not only Georgetown County but the state of South Carolina. Whereas, a graduate of Carvis Bay High School in Georgetown County, Melissa Jefferson has a decorated high school career in track and field, including a long list of accomplishments and honors. She is currently a junior enrolled at Coastal Carolina University where she has made program history-breaking records in the Sun Belt Conference and is the university's first-ever individual NCAA track and field champion. And whereas Georgetown County Council takes pride in the accomplishments of its citizens, especially its young people. And Georgetown County expresses gratitude to the many coaches, teachers, family, and friends that have encouraged and supported Melissa over the years as she strived to fulfill her potential and stepped out to be a record-breaking champion. And therefore, be it proclaimed with greatest pride that Georgetown County Council does hereby recognize Melissa Jefferson for exceeding the standards with hard work and dedication. Not only have you won a title that you greatly deserve, you have brought honor and pride throughout all of Georgetown County. Furthermore, Georgetown County joins with our citizens and others in extending our heartfelt congratulations to Melissa Jefferson upon being named a 2022 NCAA champion, and our best wishes go with you and all your future endeavors as we know you will continue to accomplish great things, and your victory and success will always be celebrated throughout Georgetown County. So shall it be this 22nd day of March 2022. Delivered and also will be signed by our chairman, Louis R. Morant. Thank you again for your achievements.
Mine was about 7.9 for the 40.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carolina, for presenting the proclamation to Ms. Jefferson. Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 22 dash 07?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Carolina for the adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilperson Johnson, Council Lady Johnson, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations again, Ms. Jefferson. Job well done. Thank you for holding Carvis Bay high. High. We move on down to item 15A, St. Francis Animal Center.
That's a tough, tough presentation to follow. So thank you so much for having me here this evening. I am super excited to discuss the good work being done at St. Francis Animal Center and the Cotton Memorial Veterinary Clinic. I'm Suzanne Roman. I'm the executive director at the center, and together with Dr. Rachel O'Sullivan and our dedicated board of directors, we manage the organization. As many of you know, we are a nonprofit animal welfare organization that has housing contracts for stray and abandoned animals with both Georgetown and the county. We also take in public surrenders when our space permits. This year, we are estimating between 1,600 to 1,700 animals coming through our facility. We consider ourselves to be a no-kill organization, and what that means is that animals are not euthanized for time or space, and that more than 90% of our animals will go on to a positive outcome. In 2021, we took in 1,454 pets. 505 of them were placed for adoption locally with local families. 108 of those were returned to their original owners, and 715 of them went on to rescue partners both locally and in the Northeast. We have a very dedicated team of employees, and they do whatever it takes to save our animals and give them the best possible opportunities. In addition to our sheltering services, we operate the Cotton Memorial Veterinary Clinic, and the clinic was opened thanks to a very generous gift from the Foddenbaum family and offers low-cost veterinary care and vaccines as well as spay-neuter services to help reduce overpopulation and future shelter intake. Last year, we serviced 2,864 clinic patients and performed 2,401 spay-neuter surgeries. So that's a lot of animals that won't be coming into the shelter in the future. This year, we are also starting dental care for animals, and we're going to be doing a number of programs and expanding on the programs that we already have. Now, we are operating a trap neuter and return program. It's called TNR for Neighborhood Cats, and TNR is the best way to reduce nuisance complaints and feral cat concerns, and that program is extremely popular and always fully booked at the center. We're also doing free spay and neuter for pit bulls. Pit bulls are the number-one type of dog that the shelter takes in, and in order to reduce that, we are offering free spay and neuter to residents who would like to get their pit bull altered. We're also doing free or minimal-cost vaccines and microchipping, and we have our popular food pantry which provides food to families who are going through hard times and cannot afford to keep their pet but wish to, and we give them food to help keep those animals in those homes when possible. We have many plans for the future at St. Francis. We are going to be doing some necessary repairs and upgrades to our kennels and our medical areas. We are hoping to expand our community outreach efforts to bring more services to the underserved areas of the county. And we're also planning to increase our staff training opportunities so that we can retain staff longer and make them the best they can be. Some of the upgrades that we've recently started working on have been our canine playyards, and we are working to design them a bit better to help with canine enrichment so that the dogs don't burn out when they're at the center and they become more easily placeable and trained and go into new homes quicker. Our center is open seven days a week for adoptions and services, and we hope that all of you will remember us if you'd like to adopt or if you need clinic care. If anyone here would like a tour, please feel free to reach out. I would be happy to show you around and show you all the good things that we're working on. I did pass out some information on the center, and I believe you've got that, but if not, I would be happy to give you additional copies. And again, we are just super proud of the lifesaving work that we do. I know sometimes animals get forgotten, but we are there for them and making a difference to so many animals and so many people here in the community. And again, just thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come out and talk about our work and talk about what we have to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Thank you, Ms. Roman. Are there any comments or questions from any of the council members for Ms. Roman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple. Didn't think you were going to get away so quick, did you? How many permanent, full-time staff do you have and volunteer staff does it take to run the clinic, to run the entire shelter, I should say?
So our clinic has a veterinarian and three vet techs who assist with the vaccine clinics and in surgery, and then our shelter team has right now 14 employees that are full and part-time. And with volunteers, active volunteers, we have about 40 to 60 who do at least one to two things each year.
Do they come and help with the weekly operation of the shelter?
They do things like walk dogs and help cats and things like that, things mostly that we just don't have enough staff to do but help the care of the animals.
Where does the majority of your budget come from?
So we do have our animal control contracts with the city and the county, so that is a portion of it, and then private donations and grants, and then, of course, various foundations like the Benel Foundation.
Do, and I take it y'all hold fundraisers through the year or?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We held many fundraisers. It got a little setback with COVID. People were less willing to come out, but we definitely try to do as much as we can. We do a direct mail marketing program, events, different outreach activities, and things like that. And of course, Pomato Giving Day is a big one for us coming up in May, which we're super excited about.
I heard you mentioned that you're, some of the things you're working on better to serve the entire underserved parts of the county. What are the plans for, particularly for that with, say, feral cats in the outlaying areas?
So one of the things that we're working on is a program called Pets for Life, and what we do is provide free services such as vaccines and spay and neuter to folks who just cannot afford it. They come into the facility, and we try to work with everyone individually to see what their needs are and get them those services so that they can keep their pets healthy and happy in their homes, and they don't need to surrender them. With our TNR program, which is our feral cat neighborhood cat program, we right now we're doing TNR days, so a lot of local folks will borrow traps and go out and trap the cats, bring them to us, and we spay and neuter them, vaccinate them for rabies, and do something called an ear tip, which is an identifying mark on their ear, and then we put them back out, and that's where they live their lives.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work you guys do.
Thank you.
Another question. Are you, if calls are put into St. Francis, you go and pick up animals, or do you function with the city and the county and the town of Andrews? How do you interact with the various municipalities?
So they actually employ So, they actually employ the animal control officers. We just do the housing for the animals that they pick up. And right now, we're doing Georgetown and we're doing the county.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment. Young lady, I'd just like to say God bless you and your team for what you do for most animal lovers out here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great team and they work for me.
Any further comments from council or questions? Thank you again, Ms. Roman. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Prior to moving forward with our next presentation, we ask that you mute your phones or turn it off during this particular meeting. So, please mute your phones or turn it off. Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll now move on down to item 15B, Foundation Forward, the Charters of Freedom. We have a presentation from Mr. Vance Patterson and Dr. David Streeter.
Being adjusted was a new term I just learned for pets. This is still on, yeah. Thank you all for making the effort to be here this evening and for allowing us to take some of your time to present our program. My name is Vance Patterson. A father of four, married 47 years to my wife, from Burke County, North Carolina, which is about halfway between Hickory and Asheville. I'm a businessman. I have a company that makes industrial fans in Blythewood, South Carolina. We actually make things out of metal, ship them across the country and around the world. A very proud American manufacturer. Dr. Streeter is going to explain how our program works. When he's done, I will give you an idea of why we're really here tonight and then answer questions. So, Dr. Streeter.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Ron Lewis and I usually travel together and do this. So, if any of you have had communication with him leading up to this point, he regrets not being here tonight. He and his wife have had to make an emergency trip to the Midwest to be with his mother-in-law, who is now under the care of hospice. So, anyway, I mean, Ron wanted me to pass that on to you. I'm going to take just a few moments and tell you about Foundation Forward. I have been working for Mr. Patterson now for a number of years after I retired, first as a probation and parole officer and then as a college instructor and administrator. The thing, the first thing I'd like to tell you about Foundation Forward foremost is we are an educational nonprofit. And we build settings instead of monuments. And the reason so is a monument pays homage to something that is no longer with us, whether it be a person or an event, to wear a setting, never goes out of style. Our charters of freedom of the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights are very much alive and well and give us all the liberties and freedoms that we all enjoy and practice every day. And this forum is very much a particular situation that has to do with that. So, again, we are an education nonprofit organization, and we build settings throughout the country. Next slide, please. If anyone has ever been to the National Archives of Washington, North Carolina to see the actual charters of freedom, this is where they're housed, in the rotunda inside this building. You can see that when you come in, as you come up to one of the higher floors and you come off the elevator, you walk down the hall, these bronze gates are, just as you see them here, with the charters of freedom in the order of the Declaration of Independence, the United States Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. Next slide, please. Especially two of our founding fathers had to do more with education than the others. And that's the reason that we put their pictures up here. Ben Franklin was more than just a politician, as you can see by this. He was an author, theorist, politician, scientist, inventor, all around sage. When a lot of the other founding fathers and others had a question, they usually went to him because of his wisdom and knowledge. Thomas Jefferson was another one that had a lot to do with education. And I will show you in the next slide. The way that our education system was set up by the founding fathers is pretty much the same way it is now. You see, we have a primary level, a secondary level, and a third level with advanced education with all the colleges and universities throughout the country and teach many things, including United States history. Next slide. This is where it all started. From what I understand, Mr. and Mrs. Patterson were at a public gathering at this building one day. This is the historic courthouse in downtown Morgantown. They had just returned not too long before this in Washington, DC, and had time to go by and see the charters of freedom. And during this public gathering, they had this epiphany. What could we do to bring that experience to the local community? And from there, it has grown. Next slide, please. So, based on that, knowing that this idea was going to grow, they set up and established an education nonprofit organization. And with not only the charters of freedom themselves, but also accompanying education materials, which I hope I have the opportunity to not only share with you at a later date, but also with principals, the teachers, and the superintendent of the local school system. Next slide, please. Anyway, the stuff of the project is they, they meaning the charters of freedom, they are exact replicas, for the most part, of what you see at Washington, DC, in the rotunda. What we like to do is place these in communities that they must be in a central location for everyone to enjoy with 24/7 visibility and with foot traffic easy to obtain, especially for schoolchildren, veterans, and then the general public. Next slide. When building a charters of freedom setting, this is the exact way we build them, as you see them here, with the Declaration of Independence on the left-hand side, the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights on the right. And we have evolved to another setting, which I will let Mr. Patterson explain to you a little bit as we proceed near the end of this presentation. Next slide. The construction process, Mr. Patterson believes in building something that will withstand the test of time. These settings are engineered and designed and built to last 300 to 500 years with just routine maintenance. And as you can see here, we go way down subsurface, approximately 3 and 1/2 feet. And we do it in the correct way by using the correct type of concrete along with rebar to reinforce all parts of the setting. Next slide. This is the one I like to call the superstructure. I was in the Navy, so anything above the main deck of a ship is called a superstructure. So, you can see, these are the pedestals to where the charters of freedom is. This is before the fascia is placed on them. The ones on the side are smaller than the one that's in the middle for the Constitution. Next slide. Next, a document tray is adhered to the top of the pedestals. And here you can see that this is being attached to the top of the pedestal after this situation brick was installed as the fascia. Next slide. You can see here, after the bronze documents, which weigh approximately 60 pounds, and I can attest to that, they are quite heavy. They're ex-bronze, and they have the exact wording that the true documents have. The only thing that's been changed is the font has been altered just a little bit so that it's readable. Then, in many of the settings, and some we do, some we don't, then we place glass on top of them. And again, this glass is an engineered-type glass to resist breakage. Next slide. You can see this is what a finished setting looks like. Again, with the Declaration on the far end, the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights on the left. Next slide, please. Mr. Patterson worked with a number of artists who designed this seal. As you can see, it has the American eagle on there, which is bold, defiant, strong. You can see the seven stars at the top, which are the, represent the articles of the United States Constitution. 10 stars below, which represent the first 10 amendments that are the Bill of Rights. Next slide. In every setting, we place a safe. And inside that safe is a time capsule that will be placed in there a few months after the main dedication, after all this is built and it's presented to the public. Then, on September 17, 2087, everyone in the country will be open on the Friday with instructions of what to do with the materials in there and how to reseal it then for the next 100 years. Next slide. This is just a good example of how we can transform a site where charters of freedom has gone. As you can see on the left-hand side, there's not a lot to see. On the right-hand side is the after picture. If you can notice the two black holes on the after picture, they're actually there in the before picture, but you just cannot see them. So, we go in and do, build one of these settings, and it can actually make a very pleasant site even more aesthetically pleasing. Next slide. This is just an example of a brick setting. This one happens to be up in the mountains of North Carolina in Burnsville, which is Jantsey County. Next slide. This one is in Asheville, North Carolina, on Pax Square, if you're familiar with that. And this is a granite setting. Next slide. And this is an example of a limestone setting. So, this shows you that we don't build all of them just in brick or just one type of material. There are various ones. Next slide. This is a very nice bedding that has donor pedestals along with a field of honor in the front of where grave legacy papers go. And again, you can see the setting in the back with all three of those in there in the order in which they're supposed to be. Next slide. We are working on a fourth pedestal that contains the Civil Rights Amendments. And I will let Mr. Patterson explain that a little bit more. And I think the next slide is just the conclusion saying that if you need any more information and would like to contact us, please feel free to do so. I have left my card with several people. And don't hesitate to come and see us. Thank you.
All right. We have done 39 of these settings across the country, in North Carolina, South Carolina, Kentucky, Indiana, Illinois, Nebraska, Virginia, Alabama, as far west as Carson City, Nevada, and as far north as Wasilla, Alaska. I've done this presentation or one similar to it many, many times. And every now and then, I would get the question, what about the other amendments? And I knew what they were talking about, 13th, 14th, 15th. 13th abolishes slavery, 14th guarantees citizenship, and the 15th allows everybody the right to vote. Well, as time went on, I realized this wasn't just about the experience Mary Jo and I had had. It's about education. And it's important that all know that these amendments are in place right now. So, I did some research, and I learned that there is no document showing the Civil Rights Amendments. In fact, there are two other amendments that need to be added, the 19th, which is women's suffrage, and the 24th, which says no poll tax. So, what we did was we contracted with the nationally-known calligraphy artist up in Winston-Salem, a guy named John Stevens. And I told him I wanted to come up with a document very similar to the Bill of Rights. So, he researched and all the writing practices of the 18th century, the writing materials and the forms for documents. And he came up with a document, which is truly a work of art. Took him three months, which me being an entrepreneur, I thought was a little bit long. But it really turned out great. And so, we have now started including that in our settings, Declaration of Independence on the left, Constitution, Bill of Rights, and then the Civil Rights Amendments, which list out all five civil rights. Now, I said that I would tell you why we're really here tonight. And that is that we want to offer this setting to Georgetown County as a gift for Mary Jo and I, to the citizens. All we ask is that you provide a suitable place to put it, has to have high visibility, high foot traffic, central to the community, and easy access. And our purpose of being here tonight is to ask you to consider this proposal that you accept the gift. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
The time capsule, is that in a separate area somewhere normally or?
It's, it'll be in the back, in a vault, in the back of the U.S. Constitution.
Thank you.
We put a vault in there, poured into the concrete, and it's sealed. They'll all be opened on September 17, 2087. And so, that'd be a very interesting time when they open those time capsules.
Another question. How large of an area do you need?
The setting itself takes about 20 feet. Well, about 28 feet now with the new setting, if you decide to have that fourth piece in there. And then about 15 feet wide.
20 by 15?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, it's not a Bigfoot. We can get it in quite a bit. But it's nice to have it big enough where people can stand around and look at it.
Mr. Patterson, does it require to be lighted during nighttime hours?
We have an option for lighting. We will lighten the document chambers if you all can bring the power to it, but it doesn't have to be. Now, one of the best questions I've ever gotten in a meeting like this was, how much is this gift going to cost us? And all we ask is that the sighting be set so that we can come in and do the construction, which means if there's a Christmas tree there, please remove it. Any water lines, pick a place where there's not too much underground, because we go down 3 and 1/2 feet. This is not a tip-over monument. And then afterwards, any landscaping that you want to do, park benches, that type of thing.
Have you run into any trouble? This is a unique area. Have you run into any trouble with groundwater placing the monuments going this deep?
No, but if we do have to, if that's a problem, then we could float it and just go down just a standard 18 inches with a pad.
Do, and some of the ones you've already constructed, have you gotten feedback on the visitation? How much are they visited or are the schools coming out to see them?
Yeah, we encourage the schools. In fact, we will, we offer to help pay for gas for them to come out. There are annual field trips that come out, and it's just amazing to see the kids. This is a hands-on educational supplement. You know, it's, the kids just really love making these field trips, seeing something that our founding fathers actually penned. They like to pick out the signatures and everything. Schoolteachers bring their third, fourth, and fifth grade classes out, learn a little about our founding fathers, a little about the documents, the history surrounding them. And also, while they're there, they learn about state and local history and how government is meant to work on the federal, state, and local levels.
We're, like I said, we're a unique area here. Say we put one up and we get a Cat 4 or 5 hurricane, and there's damage to the monument, to the structure. Do you guys come out and repair, or is that left on us or what?
Well, we turn the ownership over to the county. But, I mean, we're there to, we want it to be right. We're working with one up in Indiana, that one limestone you saw. A lady hit it with a car. You know, it was an accident and hit the Declaration of Independence. And so, we're working with the limestone company, the insurance company, and they're replacing it and repairing it.
So, you advise not to put it near a highway?
Not if it's limestone. No, this one here would probably be bricked, match this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from council or comments? Where do you normally place the majority of those which have been placed already? Where do you normally place them?
My favorite place is a historic site, which obviously you've got quite a bit down here. Courthouses are good, historic courthouses. Someplace where there's going to be good foot traffic. It doesn't have to be a historic site. We just like to make sure it's not going to be someday in a Walmart parking lot, you know, if they sell the property. And that's one of the most difficult things to do, is determine where to put it. That's something that we work with. Not a lot of time to talk about it tonight, but that's in the follow-up that we would work with you on that.
Any other comments from council or questions? Okay. Thank you for making the presentation. Madam Administrator, I guess with the consent of council here, we'd like for you to review some sites within the county to see whether it would be appropriate to place these monuments. Thank you. Thank you. We move down to our public comment section. A public, public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to thirty minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during a public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. And please be informed that there's a buzzer which will alarm you when your three-minute time period is up. We ask that you conclude your presentations properly thereafter. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Mr. Chairman, tonight we have three speakers signed up, and as you stated, each will have up to three minutes. The first is Ms. Jeanette Graham.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Administrator, members of council. My name is Jeanette Graham, and what I'm going to do, my public comments on tonight has been a thorn in my side for more than ten years. It's the Howard facility, specifically the gym area, that we pay taxes on, and it's not being used. When this started and we wanted to turn what was then just Howard Auditorium, et cetera, into a community center or somewhere for our children on the western end of town to have to congregate and play. At that time, Mr. Johnny Moran, God rest his soul, was the chairman. Sal Hemingway was, Sal Hemingway was the administrator. Anyhow, to make a long story short, they threw Eight Oaks at us to keep us quiet, to distract us with so many amenities that they promised, and we never saw any of them. Well, I take it back. We saw one fishing day and two camping days, and this was supposed to be a continuous thing. This was to keep us distracted while they decided what they wanted to do with Howard. We came back to them again, and if my mind serves me correctly, Mr. Anderson, Councilman Anderson, got up and asked them how much money had been spent on the initial procedure that was going on, something like thirty-three thousand dollars. And he asked them if it was any way for them to stop that and listen to what the public and the community had to say. And that was done. And eventually, we got the Howard Gym. The children were playing ball. Everything was going smooth. One day, they come to play ball, and it's closed. Community was not notified. No one was notified. Why is it closed? It's sitting there. We pay taxes on it, just like we pay taxes on Eight Oaks, and we don't use it. I mean, that, that doesn't make sense. Why should our children have to travel from the south side of High Market Street over to the north side to get to the gym at Beck when they have perfectly good facilities right here? Why is it not being utilized as it was promised to be used? It's just sitting there, collecting dust, or you have county events or weddings and all that kind of stuff, but our children are still locked out. They do not have a recreation area to use, and this is there. This is why we pay the taxes on it. And the same thing with Eight Oaks. There's not even a picnic table in Eight Oaks. Going to walk through it? It was supposed to be a theater, walking trail, stage for a live performance, and all of that was promised in the initial thing for Eight Oaks to keep the Howard facilities out of their hair. But it's still not doing what it's supposed to do. Our children need somewhere to congregate and play and not have to cross High Market Street. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, county council people, Madam Administrator. I am here also to speak to this Howard facility. Not so much the building, I think we've gone through that quite a bit, just to be disrupted by the county, but here I am, this is what I'm here. I've spoken to Mr. Keith Price over at the school district. I spoke to the community, people at Lemp, and over time, they have real concerns about that Howard campus. What happened is the school district provided a huge maintenance building on that facility. Who did they ever talk to? No one. It's their grounds, but that's not right. I mean, this is a community, a viable community, who have concerns for the things that take place in their community. You put this building there as it's starting to appear to the people who reside there that this is going to be a community dumping ground. Hopefully, that's not the case. So what we are proposing, back in two thousand and three, they proposed Howard be a community center. Here we are in two thousand twenty-two. It's not that yet, and after talking with the community and myself thoughts, somehow or another, this is not supposed to go down like this. So I decided, since the school district is who owned the property, we had already had our fights with the county over the Howard Auditorium and Gymnasium. I thought everything was in stone, but apparently it wasn't. But we wanted to secure that school campus, and here's why. For those of us who are Howard graduates, that is our history and our legacy, and it's a long and exalted history and legacy. There's a lot of prominent individuals who graduated from Howard School. Examples, Coach T.L. Smith, Tommy L. Smith is one of two coaches on the South Carolina East Coast that's in the South Carolina Hall of Fame. Doug Shaw is the other. You have one prominent NBA player to come out of Georgetown, South Carolina. His name was Jake Forty. He's a graduate of Howard High School. You had any number of other prominent individuals. So if the community is looking for backing, you've got any number of prominent ministers locally who are graduates of Howard High School. We want that campus secured for our legacy, our history, and we have engaged in talks with the school district, who are very receptive. The city, the new administration, they are very receptive. Only odd man out, I think, is the county, and hopefully, we can get you guys on board. It's the right thing to do for the right reason at the right time, and we just beg your indulgence that you step in and do whatever you can do and help us get this endeavor underway, because two thousand three to two thousand twenty-two is a long span of time to do nothing. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Again, good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about fire hydrants. During the last Capitol Project sales tax attempt, we requested that fire hydrant be replaced in the community of Planusville and those rural areas where it did not exist. Prior to that, there were four houses that burnt down in three years. Just on last week, another house burnt down to the ground. Two of those house fires resulted in a person being burnt up in those homes. Two of those were my family members. Last week, another house burnt down. Wife of a family member, Roy Dees. We are asking that you go back to the drawing room, do whatever study is necessary, see what is necessary to start moving forward with fire hydrants in the rural area of Georgetown. And I'm speaking of Planusville, Chappie, Brown Surry, P.D., Sampit, wherever it may be, but we need fire hydrants. The son of Helen Dees, when he got to the house on last week, his mother was crawling to the door, trying to get there. She is a stroke victim that couldn't get to the front. When he kicked the door in, he reached in and pulled through the door. That could have been another death of a fire in Planusville. I don't think we need one more death anywhere. So I'm asking you to go back and do whatever study is necessary, see what the cause factor is, bring it back to the community, and see what we have to do collectively to get fire hydrants in Planusville and the rural areas. That's my ask. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, please? Pardon me? Okay. I want to thank all for the comments during the public comment. And some years ago, our colleague, Mr. Anderson, made that request of the administrator regarding the renovation process at Howard, on how much money had been spent at that time. And from that, we got some action for the community. I'm asking if we can do a review of our current parks and recreational program and see how we can improve it, take a serious look of the recreational program in Georgetown County, look at our assets, locations, and properties, look at the personnel and the placement of personnel management to, to run that program and better prepare and make it a better product for the young people here in Georgetown County. The Howard facility, it's an outstanding facility, and as mentioned by the alumni and members of the community, it needs to be better utilized. You have one part of the city, the west end, where children have to walk a distance to go to Beck if Beck is even open. And now you have a realignment where you've closed the gym and transferred and created a senior citizens' location. Seniors in, youth out. We have to kind of look at what we're doing in Parks and Recreation and the Aging Services and make it better. And I'm just asking that we sit down and kind of come up with the idea and plan that will better serve the citizens of Georgetown County. Thank you.
Thank you all for your, your comments, and we definitely will take those comments under consideration and actually will have a look to see what county can do regarding them. Thank you. Thank you all. We move to our approval of minutes. We have the council work session for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes for our council work session on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton? Oh, Carolina, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Council work session on February third, twenty twenty-two, is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. And we also have council work session for February eighth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second? Second by Council Lady Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Now, we move to our regular council meeting on March eighth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Johnson. Goggins, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. There are two items on our consent agenda, and the following items which were included on the consent agenda have been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number twenty-two dash zero one-two, CTC road repair and resurfacing, and also procurement number twenty-two dash zero zero-two, grass cutting and grounds maintenance for Down to a second reading of ordinances. Well, no, we have our resolutions for, resolution number twenty-two dash zero-six. It's the resolution to declare April twenty twenty-two as Fair Housing Month in Georgetown County. We'd ask Madam Clerk to give us, to present that force, please.
Mr. Chairman, in nineteen sixty-eight, the U.S. government enacted laws in support of fair housing policies. The state of South Carolina followed up with that, and since that time, Georgetown County has also supported those policies. We believe that all citizens should have the right to attain decent housing without the fear of discrimination, and we are asking that council give favorable consideration to adopting resolution number twenty-two oh six, declaring April twenty twenty-two as Fair Housing Month in Georgetown County.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding Madam Clerk's presentation? Is there a motion for adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash zero-six?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do adopt resolution twenty-two zero-six.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman Goggins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Lady Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We're down to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve, to rezon, one parcel totaling approximately one acre located at one-two-zero-three-six Pleasant Hill Drive in Georgetown. TMS number zero-three dash zero-four-one-two dash zero-four-six dash zero-zero dash zero-zero from Forest Agricultural to residential one-half acre. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request from Beth Roberts to rezon a one-acre parcel from F.A. to R-one-half. And as you said, the parcel is located on Pleasant Hill Drive in Georgetown. The parcel currently contains two residential structures on one lot. The owner is proposing to change the zoning on the property to R-one-half in order to be able to subdivide the lot so that they can sell one of the structures that are located there to the current renter who is a longtime resident on the property. Once the parcels are subdivided, they will meet the minimum lot area requirement for the half-acre zoning district, which is twenty thousand square feet. The surrounding tracts in this area are all zoned forest and agriculture, and the surrounding uses are residential and vacant or agricultural lands. There is a church in the immediate vicinity as well. The future land use map designates this property, along with all the property in this surrounding area, as low-density residential, and there are a few general commercial spots, but besides that, most of the Pleasant Hill area is zoned F.A. for the low density. The single-family use is permitted in both F.A. and R-one-half acre zoning, which fits under the moderate to low-density designation. Therefore, we do not need a change to the future land use map in order to facilitate this request. We don't consider this to be spot zoning. If there is a zoomed-out picture of the zoning map in your packet that shows several smaller half-acre zoning districts in the Pleasant Hill area that are approximately about the same size as this one, we think that one-half acre would be in keeping with the adjacent and the historical use for the property. Again, these houses were put there on this parcel prior to zoning being enacted in that portion of the county, which if you remember, happened in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. The planning commission held a public hearing at their February meeting. No one came forward to speak, and the commission did recommend approval with a vote of six to zero, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions for Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion for a second reading approval of ordinance number twenty-two dash twelve?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one-two.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? We don't have any executive sessions or anything. Is there any further business to come before council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Caroline. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Stand adjourned. Thank you.[1730.53]